Yeah.
How are you guys?
No, we were. It was just, uh, I was the one on the speaking booth and anyone else.
I'm sorry. No. No? Yeah. Oh, really? I can't go. Yeah, I think so. I think that sounds right. I got my second shot.
Yeah.
I was, I was really fine. No, I didn't have a last one. And I was, yeah, um. Now, let me ask you. Okay.
Yeah, yeah, it's okay.
Like, I don't know if I'm gonna say what I thought. I feel okay. I'm a little maybe tired. Girl, you could start with my mom, my sister. But I got, I will say this, that noise, I got really, I had chills. I couldn't get mine. Yeah. Hello. Hi. Oh, my gosh, sorry. What? Oh, yeah. Rob.
Yeah.
Sony, cool little gorillas. Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, it's fine.
Yeah.
I did.
For these to pick them up?
I took them.
The fact that they did last time.
Because I was ready.
There's last time set them up.
Yeah, I took them and I was like, I'm gonna, I'm gonna back it up. Because I was gonna go out and tear them out with the state money. You know. We come in. I love when you're like, we're always like, we're almost like, when you make them just tell the governor. Put all Hitler masks on. I'm getting like a dollar every night. Yeah. I'm making it great. Don't look. I was a little worried about my going off for you myself, like, if I lose again. But I realized, we're not four people. And four people, um, and four parents, uh, are four parents.
I mean, the silver lining is just being respectful.
Thank you. I just signed for like a grant.
Got it, got it.
There you go. So where are you?
Sounds good.
Oh, my God. I'm sure, so you're, you see, you're, you're, it's coming. I, I felt like I feel like. My strength is on your own. But that's not cheating. Then I was like, I'm learning within. Plus, like, so we're driving, I mean, now we have to be coped out on. There's some drawings, but I also like watching you. Two, four.
Yeah, yeah.
You bet. That was amazing. Oh, um, we, 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 we was reading Elka. Oh, I thought. Oh, cool.
Sounds good. Test one, two. Test one, two. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Twenty-Third Annual Student Union's Board of Education Candidates Forum. My name is Benjamin Fox, and I am the president of the 2020-2021 Lancaster High School Student Union. To my right is the student union president-elect for the 2021-2022 school year, Alyssa Kornacki. Alyssa will be serving as tonight's timekeeper for the question-and-answer session. The purpose of tonight's program is to allow for each candidate running for trustee of the Lancaster School District Board of Education the opportunity to express her personal opinion in response to questions being submitted by members of the Lancaster School District voting community. I have also prepared some questions in advance if they are needed. There are two candidates running for two positions on the Lancaster Board of Education. Board members are elected at large and will serve a three-year term from July 1st, 2021, to June 30th, 2024. I will now introduce each candidate in alphabetical order by reading a short biography. Will each candidate please stand as I introduce you? Shannon Cohen. Shannon Cohen is proud to seek a second term serving as trustee on the Lancaster Board of Education. Above all, she believes that the ability to listen and respect the opinions of others, as well as a willingness to collaborate, are integral to the role of trustee. Each person on the board brings their own unique view to our work, and I have learned something from every member of the board with whom I have served. "At the end of the day, we all have the same goal: to continue to do great things for the kids in our district," says Mrs. Cohen. Over the last three years, she has also served as delegate representative for Lancaster on the Erie County Association of School Boards, and in that role has had the opportunity to also gain perspective from other districts in our area. Mrs. Cohen has called Lancaster home since 1996 and has been impressed repeatedly with the dedication of teachers and administrators alike. Not only do I love the community, but my girls have quite simply flourished in Lancaster schools. She is the proud mom of a 2020 Lancaster graduate, as well as a current sophomore at LHS. Her daughters have taken advantage of many of the programs in Lancaster, such as the academies offered. It was important to her to give back to the district that has given her family so much, and serving on the board has been her privilege. A project manager at Mueller Reports, Mrs. Cohen graduated from SUNY Fredonia in 1994. She has experience in software and web development, marketing, and market research. In her various roles, she has managed extensive client budgets and enterprise-level development, frequently delivering concurrent projects for multiple clients. She brings these same skills to her work with the board. Mrs. Cohen is a seasoned problem solver and skilled communicator who believes that actively listening to the residents of the district is imperative. As she put it, she leads with a yes, noting that optimism is a key ingredient to success. "2020 brought about many challenges that none of us could have imagined. Through it all, I am proud of the fact that we were able to come together to meet those challenges to the best of our ability. Moving forward, I look forward to watching all of our graduates embark on their own successful paths, proud of what Lancaster has offered them." Jill Sami-Fetcher. Jill Fetcher is excited to seek reelection for the Lancaster Central School District Board of Education after serving for the past three years. Ms. Fetcher said, "I have so much passion for the Lancaster School District and want to continue to support its efforts in any way I can." Lancaster Academy's character development and the abundance of extracurricular activities is unmatched in Western New York. Ms. Fetcher grew up in Lancaster, graduating in 2000. She now has three children, Lila, age seven, Allan, six, and Owen, two, in the district. I've learned so much about the way the education system in New York State works from serving on the Lancaster School Board for the last three years. I'm proud of the way our district makes decisions, keeps our community informed, and continues to innovate. The past two school years have been challenging for all, but Lancaster makes every decision by determining what is in the best interest of the students. The district administration has worked tirelessly throughout the pandemic to do what is right for our students, and I am grateful for that and happy to support them. Ms. Fetcher earned a bachelor's degree in marketing and management from St. Bonaventure University. She believes her education in the Lancaster School District prepared her for her college experience and provided the foundation she needed to be successful in her studies and beyond. She is the chief growth officer at Cypress North, a local digital agency. She also volunteers with the American Cancer Society as the Western New York Board Chair and enjoys supporting fundraisers for LEAF, Lancaster Women's Lacrosse, and many other community initiatives. And now, the question-and-answer period will begin. We will proceed as follows. Any person wishing to ask a question of the board candidates may contact the district clerk at 686-3201. Again, that number, 686-3201. Please give your name, address, and then ask your question. The district clerk will read your question to the candidates. Each candidate will be given a two-minute opportunity to respond to each question in a rotating order. Mrs. Cohen, on the odd numbers, you'll be going first, then with Mrs. Fetcher, and on even numbers, Ms. Fetcher, and then Mrs. Cohen. So we will just be waiting for if there are any questions from the community on the phone number one more time, 686-3201. Okay. Yeah, absolutely. Sounds good. So I'll let's start off by asking our first question. Mrs. Cohen, you'll be going first. What experiences do you remember from your K through 12 education, and how will these experiences affect your performance on the Board of Education?
That's a good question. I am an Erie Point grad, class of '90, and I, I remember quite vividly senior year having a great creative writing teacher that really instilled in me a love of writing, and he was, he was a real mentor to me. And I think I've carried some of that advisement throughout my entire, my entire life, through to college and then through my career. And it really, for me, established that, it really taught me that teachers are, you know, it just takes that one teacher sometimes to really, you know, make a difference in somebody's life and a kid's life. And for me, that, and I, I've seen that time and time again here in Lancaster with my own daughters.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. So I went to Lancaster since I was in kindergarten all the way through, and, um, I guess there's a ton of opportunities here, and I know you said it in my bio, that there's so many extracurriculars, or so many things that kids can get involved in, even so much more today than there was 20-plus years ago. And one of the things that I did when I was a senior at Lancaster was the leadership class before it was an academy. And when people talk about what happens now in the academy, I'm like insanely jealous that I didn't get to do the whole thing, but we had a class back then. And it was so cool, and it was such a different experience than what I think a lot of my friends when I went to college, when they talked about what they did, like, they had nothing like that. And it just gave me a chance to get, it felt like real-world working experience, planning events at the school, being involved in things with the school, and just getting to know, you know, more administrators and people like that. So I just thought that was an awesome opportunity, and that really shaped who, who I am, and a big foundation of what I went on to study in college in marketing and management. But I think that's just one example of all of the different opportunities that we had here in Lancaster. And I would, I also always talk about that there's just something for everyone. So it didn't matter if you were an athlete, or you were a music kid, or you were both, or you were into art, or you were into science, there's something for everyone. And I think that's something that, like, is, is really important. It's important to me, it's important to me as a parent, that my kids have those opportunities, and, and it has shaped who I am to have all of those different options.
Thank you both. Question number two. In your estimation, what is the biggest challenge that faces the Lancaster School District? If elected, how do you plan to solve this challenge?
I have to go first. Shoot. So, um, you know, not to, not to dwell on the pandemic, because that's everyone's biggest challenge this year, right? All of the things that come along with that. I think our biggest challenge as a, as a district is sometimes how large we are. And I think that our district does a great job communicating with all of the constant emails and calls and meetings and social media updates and all of those things. But in any organization that I come into contact with, at work or anywhere, or people that I talk to, communication is always everyone's biggest challenge. Because if one person in this community of thousands and thousands of people didn't hear the message, then there could be some other way to communicate it. So I have, you know, I've talked to other board members about it, I've talked to the administration about it, that, that is my biggest thing, that I always want to help improve communication and build upon it, and so that is one of the things that I want to do this year. This term.
And I agree with Jill 100% about communication, but certainly, I think from a student perspective as well, I think really continuing to foster and grow our academies here, as I've seen my own two go through the academy process that has set them up for a path for success, and understanding and recognizing that not all our kids are ready, are, are, you know, college path. That we have so many kids that are invested in the trades academy and so forth, and they're going to go on out of Lancaster and be incredibly successful because we fostered that through the academy system.
Thank you. Question number three. Please list and explain three reasons why you are running as a candidate for the Board of Education.
Well, I could say Bree and Paige is my first two. No, um, so my kids certainly were, were my main reason originally for running. I saw that they were, they were becoming just incredibly rounded young adults, and now we're on a path of success. And so much of that can be really traced back to every experience from Court Street to William Street, then to the Lancaster Middle, and then to the high school. So that, you know, that's one of my biggest reasons. And I also think, um, throughout the course of my career, I've been really focused on, you know, career, but not enough volunteer work. And it really has been so, um, it, it's been an incredible experience for me to give back and to spend that time to give back to the district and to give back to the community. I think that that has been, I have been able to give, but then give back so much more, um, from the district.
Thank you.
I was also gonna say Lila, Ella, and Owen. But I think, I mean, it's more important than, than just your own kids. One of the, one of the things that we talk about all the time, every single time that the board has a decision to make, Dr. Vilely say, what is in the best interest of the students, and that is the number-one guiding principle, and it's all about all of our students here. You know, I think my, my children are fortunate to have two parents, and we're in a home where we can give them support and get them a tutor when they have issues with remote learning and things like that, and not every student has that. And so I think it's really important, um, you know, one of the reasons that I'm running is to be a voice for all students and to help all the students in our community. I also just love Lancaster. That's my second reason. I'm like the biggest Lancaster townie you'll ever meet, besides my sister, and I, I really, I love this school district. I always want to be involved. I want to, um, give back, as Shannon said, and have a reason to, to be at everything and come to everything, and, and I'm proud of it, and I'm proud to, to be a part there. Was that three?
That's good. Our next question. As part of the Lancaster Board of Education, how could you see the board taking extra steps to reach out and be accessible to the Lancaster community?
So, so besides coming to board meetings, how can we be accessible to them? One of the things that, that I've been thinking a lot about lately, and we were just talking about it at the beginning of this, that, um, there's a lot of chatter on social media, there's a lot of misinformation out there, just from people talking, people hearing rumors. And then people get upset, you know, about it, and so I think that if there is a way that they could have a little more access to us, either via email or a social media page, maybe we turn our Board of Education campaign page into a social media page that we could listen or answer questions. I think that would be a great way for people to have more access than just coming here. Or share soundbites from the meeting, things like that, on social media. I think everyone's there. We have to meet them where they are.
And I would, I would piggyback on that a little bit. You know, one of the things that I had seen other districts do in the past is have kind of a, an ambassador, if you will, to each of the various buildings, and maybe one of us serves as, in that kind of capacity, where we say, okay, well, I'm gonna go out and, and make sure that I'm at the events for Lancaster Middle, or I'm at the events for Court Street, or what have you. Just, you know, to improve some visibility, I know we have here within the district that we're, you know, I think, um, this has been a really interesting year. We don't necessarily, we don't have a participation, we don't have attendance, you know, like physical attendance at the board meetings. You know, I think people are watching, I hope they're watching, um, to see that, you know, the business at hand. And I think, you know, as Jill said, there is so much misinformation out there sometimes, and somebody gets a little idea, and then it grows, and, um, you know, you get into situations where people are, you know, they're confused about a, a topic or so forth. So I'm usually quick to say, oh, hey, no, that's, you know, you want to go here. Somebody asked a question on social media the other day about a remote student, where do they go to, um, say they were absent, and I said, oh, well, you know, go to the, you know, email the attendance office. And it was just a real quick, you know, just to be helpful and just to make sure that we're getting the right information out there. I'm always sharing the COVID updates, I swear.
Perfect. Thank you. Kind of piggybacking off of that, um, do you feel that there should be any student input in the decision-making process, including student membership on the Board of Education?
I would love to see more of the student participation, you know, come to the board meetings, or, you know, have a representative. We, we always get representation from the teachers, the administrators, and so forth. We'd love to hear from you guys. I think, you know, we, we're here for you, right? So I think that would be a fantastic idea.
Yeah, that's interesting, because I forgot about when we were doing in-person board meetings for the first two years of being on the school board, that there was students that would come for their participation in government class. So they would, they would come regularly, but they didn't necessarily participate as much, but maybe there is a way to get them involved, you know, asking questions at the board meeting, or preparing a question, or a, or a statement, or something for the public forum part of it. I do know there is a, a group of students that meets at the, um, at the district office regularly to give input, um, but yeah, we'd love to see it.
Perfect. Moving on. Do you support the proposed 2021-2022 school budget, and please explain your answer?
Yes. I think our administrative office does such a great job with the, um, with the school budget and making sure that we're, again, including all students and taking care of all their needs. There's nothing in there to cut out things that will benefit, you know, any of, any of our students. So I fully support the 2021 budget. So I fully support the 2021 budget.
Absolutely. I would agree. I fully support the budget. I think time and time again, we've seen here in Lancaster that we are fiscally responsible. We are always noted as one of the most responsible districts in terms of our finances. I think the team has done a great job again this year to balance the budget, to give us, you know, we keep all programs, we're keeping all arts, all music, all sports, the academies, everything that is great about Lancaster stays. And I think the community recognizes that as a whole.
Thank you. If this, if this year's school budget does not pass, what would you favor eliminating from this proposed budget?
I can't imagine, I can't imagine what could possibly be cut. Because truly, as Jill said earlier, there is something in this budget for every child in the district. And I'm a music and arts mom, right? And it would just break my heart to see any of that go. It would break my heart to see the sports go. I can't imagine anything that could possibly go by the wayside. And it would really be devastating to me to see the budget not pass.
I agree. Shannon, I just agree on a lot of this. But I, yeah, I couldn't think of one thing that I would say, oh, well, don't worry about this because this only affects 30 kids or this only affects this team or something of that nature. I just can't. And a lot of the budget is made up of salaries for all of our amazing teachers and benefits and salaries and benefits for all of our staff members, teachers, administrators, custodians, bus drivers, lunch ladies, all of the things. So it's, you know, that's really important and our people is really what makes the school district happen. So, sorry to not answer.
No worries. If this school budget does not pass, how would you inform the Lancaster taxpayers about future budgets in order to increase better communications?
This is, this is a hard one because I think that a lot of years, we spend a lot of time telling everyone to come vote, right? And especially in the years when there's no, you know, there's nobody opposing us for, for the school board, you know, there's not people coming out in opposition of that. So a lot of people think, oh, I'll just stay home. And so it, you know, even hearing that question is a great reminder to get out there and make sure that people are going to vote and support our schools and support our students. Because the people that turn out to vote no are going to be the people who don't have students or don't care what happens, you know, to kids in schools but live in our town. And so I'm not sure how I would, how I would do it differently if it doesn't pass, but, but this is a good reminder that I'm going to get out there and tell more people to vote in the first place.
I would echo that. I think that we really need to, you know, keep up the constant communication and making sure that we're getting out there and, you know, Glenn Jackson always says that he's in Wegmans and he hears from, he hears from people in the produce aisle. And it really is about going out and talking to people and communicating with your neighbors and saying, you know, everybody in my neighborhood knows they better be here on the 18th. 18th, is it the 18th issue? Lost track. It's Tuesday, the 18th. That they better be here to vote, you know, get out there. And this is not just, and it's not just the parents in the neighborhood, it's not just my neighbors that have kids. It's, you know, the lady across the street whose kids graduated 15 years ago. She knows, she's like, oh, got to get up there and vote. Because it's not about her kids anymore, but it's about my kids and it's about the kids across the street and the neighbors and so forth. And it's really about getting out there, spreading the word, telling people the great things that we're doing here and making sure that they come out.
Good answers, thank you. Do you support the push for students to actively take part in AP classes at an earlier age? Please explain your answer.
Those AP classes, they can be tough. Apparently there were some exams today that were locked up. I'm a bit on the fence on this one, I won't lie. Because I saw my own daughter last year and the year before take her AP exams. And it's, it's a, it's a tough, it's a tough process and they're challenging courses. So as a mom, sometimes I go, ooh, I'd love to be able to, you know, shield you from some of that. But I also think as a mom of an assertive couple of daughters, that they know what's in their mind. And if they're really looking, looking to take that exam, then I have to support them in that.
Similarly, I, I don't think it's for everyone. But I think having it available at a younger age is, is great. Because you have more practice and you have more time to understand what goes into those. So if you take a few and you're, you know, at a younger grade level, then when you're a senior and you're taking some, you're more used to that style of exam or what it takes to prepare for them, what kind of studying you need to do and that kind of thing. And honestly, there's no, if you're taking the class and you're doing well and you can, you can pass it and you can go forward it, even if you don't pass the exam those first, you know, time or two around then, you know, you're still just getting that practice in. And I think pressuring too many kids to do it can never be a good thing. It's not for everybody, it's not for every student to be trying to take those tests. But for these kids that excel at it and are doing really well and need to be challenged, I think it's a great thing to offer.
Thank you. What is your stance on mental health awareness in Lancaster? And how would you take extra steps to improve the social, emotional education for Lancaster students?
I think mental health is really important. I think it's such a huge focus now, more so than it ever has been, especially with the pandemic and kids needing more help because they might be in a bad situation or they might, you know, school is where they're, they feel emotionally safe or their friends are, if they're feeling alone throughout this whole thing. And so I think it's really important that we invest in that. I think it's important that we continue to check on kids and give them the things that they need and offer a lot of routes for that. So I know, you know, even as an adult in the working world, at my insurance, they give you a lot of different options and they promote different things. Like it depends on helpful email and say, you can text the therapist if you want or you can make an appointment or you can, you can talk to somebody or you can join this group. So I think offering students as many avenues for that to, to help them identify when they're having issues, help them work through those issues or continue to get ongoing support is really important. And everything that we can do as a school district to support that, I'm in support of.
I would 100% agree with that. I think in this age of social media, there's, there are a lot of pressure. There's a ton of pressure on kids that I would never have even imagined when I was a teenager. Certainly there's always that level of peer pressure that doesn't ever go away. But now with social media, I think that it's just been exacerbated. And I would agree. I think that we, as a district, we, you know, we're always, we're always very clear about, you know, job one here is, it's all about the kids and what do those kids need? And if we need to provide additional services, I would support that 100%.
Thank you. As schools begin to reopen, how would you see the Board of Education supporting students and their families with regard to reopening?
I think I would, I would go back to what happened here in this district last year and throughout the course of the summer. And this, in March of last year, we pivoted to full remote learning for all the kids. And I can't say enough about what we did here. And it was just an astronomical, it was just a huge task to pivot everybody. And then throughout the course of the summer, to be able to identify here in Lancaster that, hey, you know what, we could go every other day and we can, and what, you know, the buildings did to accommodate that, to do cleaning and so forth at night and to handle all of that, to say, all right, we're not going to have kids in a break of like five days. In other districts, kids are going Monday, Tuesday, they're off on Wednesday to deep clean, and then they don't come back to the classroom until the following Monday. Whereas here in Lancaster, kids are going every other day. And that, I think, has been just a huge opportunity for us to really keep kids on track and in, you know, involved in their, in their schoolwork. Because, you know, and then other districts that went full remote. I think that we, I think we've really done a great job and I think that we have listened to parents by allowing for both a remote and a hybrid model. You know, we definitely have parents that, you know, they're, they're more worried about the health and safety of their kids or they're worried about, more worried about COVID, they would, they chose remote. And that was absolutely the right choice for their family. Other families went hybrid. That was the great choice for their family. I think as a district, we have listened and responded well.
So as a Board of Education, what we can do to support as they do a full reopening K through 12, I think our role is to help support the decisions that are being made and to communicate those and to advise on any, you know, holes that we see in the plan or any issues that might be forthcoming. But also to, to support them in, you know, squashing the misinformation, to, you know, shed some positive light on it, to help people understand the different sides. Because everyone in the public doesn't see all the things that go into decision-making and, and we don't necessarily see all the steps either. But we are given a lot of information about, here's what we considered, here are the different issues with that plan, here's another plan that we considered, here are the issues with that plan, here is why and the reasoning why or why not we went with what we did. And I think that we can help shed some light on that with people that we encounter in Wegmans at the produce aisle or in the neighborhood and people are saying, why'd they do this instead of that? Or I like what Amber is just doing, or I like this thing. And it's like, but do you like all of what they're doing? I think our district does an amazing job. And while you might like one aspect of something you heard from somebody else down the line, you know, helping shed light on, well, we're a much bigger district and this is why that decision was made or this is why, you know, they don't want you doing this or that. So I think just being in support and kind of giving people that objective outsider look is important, is an important role.
Perfect. Is there a particular issue that motivates you to serve on the Lancaster Board of Education?
I guess like an issue as like a concern, no. But I, I think that the issue is I, I want to be in support of it as a parent, as a community member, as an alumni, to continue to do the good things that Lancaster is doing, to continue to support the budgets that we put in place. And the improvements that we're making, the capital improvements that we're making are phenomenal. And, and, you know, I want to be there to continue to do that. Because if, if we're not, if people are coming on the board to cut things and to cut budgets and to try to, you know, lower taxes to, by cutting out these, you know, what some students need or care about, that would be really detrimental to our district. And so I'm running in support of all of these things, not to change a crisis or a big concern or one singular issue.
Our former board president, Pat Uteck, once said that, actually probably said it more than once, that if you're running for the board just for one issue, you're probably on the board for the wrong reason. I think it was bad, right? And that resonated with me because I think that it's not about laser focusing on one thing. You have to really look at the district as a whole and decide, all right, am I here to help the kids? Am I here to, you know, foster some of the great things and have a little bit of a partner, right? Like have a little bit of partners in the capital projects and, and the budget that gets passed. And to recognize that what we're doing right now in 2021 has a ripple effect. And that's, those are the things that are going to be felt in 2031 and 41 and 51. And the decisions that were made 50 years ago in this district are some of the things that we're seeing right now. Some of the ways the buildings have been, have grown and how the district has grown. These decisions that we're making now have a much wider impact.
Thank you both. We're going to end a little early just because I feel like I've grilled you guys enough tonight. So thank you very much for answering all of the questions. Thank you both again. At this time, we'll begin to close our forum with each candidate having a one-minute closing statement. We'll begin with you, Mrs. Coleman.
I won't lie, I prepared something because that's what I do. So it's really been my pleasure to serve for the past three years here in this district. And I look forward to serving for another three years. I think that I have seen, I've lived with the results of this district. I have seen my girls flourish and excel and just enjoy school, enjoy coming here. It's not just about friends, it's not just about the social, you know, the socialization that they got here, which was great. But it's some of those special teachers and administrators that they, they have throughout the, you know, through the course of their careers here at Lancaster. And a couple of weeks ago, I kind of said, I said something that had resonated with me that I had heard, and that was that everybody can't do, everyone can't do everything, but everyone can do something. And this is my something. This is where I come in and I, I give back to the district that has given me so much.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Ms. Fudgeon?
Shannon prepared a really good statement. That's exactly what I was going to say. No, just kidding. So I've been, I've been really excited to serve over the past three years. And it's very different than I thought it would be. I learned so much. A lot of what you see is us, you know, approving things and just passing things through and all of that. But I've learned so much about how the education system works, how our district works, how New York State works with education, and so many details that I never knew before. And I'm really proud to say that our district does the right thing. And I know I've said it today already, but the fact that every single decision we make, we keep every student in mind and that it's what's best for the students, not for, not necessarily for the parents, not necessarily for the employees, but what is best for those students. And that's the number one thing. And I'm, I'm just really proud of that. And so I'm proud to run again.
Thank you. On behalf of the Lancaster High School Student Union, I would like to thank the candidates again and the attendees tonight for your interest in our schools and our future. Our hope is that this evening's forum was informative and helpful. Good luck to the candidates and please remember to vote on Tuesday, May 18th, right here in the Lancaster High School Java Gym from 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM. This concludes our program. Thank you.
Present time.
I think we probably should have pulled the 2020.
I did your point of view, right? As long as there's no edits that say we remember. Right? What is? Right next to you. Uh, that'll be right to the end of session. We'll just be, no, right. So I don't know, this is 1920. Just saying it's 20.
Yeah.
It is not plugged in, it's like, is there a setting on the camera? What, what did he say? What did he say about?
You want the guy to work.
He likes your picture.
What?
He likes the image.
So we just need one more minute for little technical difficulties and then we'll be started. Thank you.
It says, do they record stage runs?
So thank you, I'd like to welcome everyone to the Lancaster Central School District's annual budget hearing. Two pieces of information. Number one, anyone that'd like to call and ask any questions, please call 686-3201. There's a little delay in this live streaming, so I figured I'd mention that now. The presentation, we'll do a presentation and then we'll answer any questions at the end of that. Secondly, I wanted to mention to anyone that's listening, that the PowerPoint is available on the website under Board Meeting Documents and that page. And if you'd like to follow along, you can either go to it or download that PowerPoint. So again, I'd like to welcome, what a year it's been. The Corona coaster, we've learned, is not as fun as the comet or the viper. And it certainly has taken us on a ride like no other in the history of this school district. But each and every time, we've tried to do the next thing, the next right thing. And we had, we've had a laser focus on fulfilling our mission as a school district of taking care of our kids. I'm very proud of everyone involved and I wanted again to send everyone in the district and in the community a huge, huge thank you. On a micro level, student achievement continues to be the highest ever in school district history. Our 2020 graduation rate from Lancaster High School was ninety-five, ninety-nine point five percent in June of 2020. And that remains number one in Western New York, or at least one of the, one of the best in Western New York for the sixth year in a row. Important to me personally, and many of you in this audience and listening tonight, is the fact that the two students who did not graduate in June 2020 actually did graduate in August of 2020, which would increase our graduation rate to 100%. Absolutely remarkable. In 2020, sixty-three point five percent of our students graduated with advanced designation Regents diplomas, highest in school district history. And last year, seniors were awarded over nine point six five million dollars in scholarships, highest in school district history. I expect this year's student achievement to be even better and I am so proud. This budget, which the Board of Education and the district worked so hard on, believes in and supports, maintains all current instructional programs, student opportunities, student services, and class sizes that the Lancaster community has come to expect and appreciate. So let's get going. The budget vote details, you've heard it from our candidates, if you were listening to the Meet the Candidates night before this, is Tuesday, May eighteenth. It goes from seven AM to nine PM. And that's in the Java gym, our north entrance of the high school here at One Forton Drive. The proposed budget is a one hundred and seventeen million, nine hundred and twenty thousand, nine hundred and twenty-one dollar budget. The ten-year average budget to budget increase is about three percent. This budget follows suit and is commensurate with that, coming in at two point nine nine percent. The final budget figure, it is two point seven million dollars in reductions from the original draft when we first started the process. At this point, I'd like to ask Jamie and Andy to take you through the details of the budget and then I'll end with the bottom line. So Jamie?
Thank you, Dr. Vallee. We are required to present the budget every year in a three-part budget format. So those three parts are administrative, instructional, and capital. I will be discussing the administrative and capital and Dr. Kufu will be providing the instructional budget and program highlights. The administrative component provides for the overall general support and management activities of the district as a whole, including the district office functions, district-wide expenditures, business functions, and building administration. It is the smallest portion of our budget at nine point eight eight percent overall. This portion of the proposed budget is increasing overall by five point two one percent. Two point seven eight percent of that increase is contractually obligated salary and benefits. And we also have a two hundred and six thousand dollar increase, which is attributed to increases in our services that we receive from BOCs. Upgrades to our communications and safety services, network upgrades, and cybersecurity enhancements. We've also shifted a cost from the instructional portion of the budget to this portion of the budget, and that is the cost of our school physician. And that physician now being paid through BOCs, we will be able to receive aid back on those expenses as opposed to creatively. All of those BOCs increases are addable, as is all other BOCs costs throughout the budget. And I will turn it over to Dr. Kufu to discuss the instructional portion of the budget.
Thank you, Ms. Phillips. The program portion of the budget is the largest portion of the budget at seventy-four percent. This portion contains all the expenditures directly related to instruction of our students, including classroom instruction, special education, technology, transportation, extracurricular activities, and student support services, such as school counseling, social work, library, and the health office, to name a few. This portion of the budget maintains all current programs, class sizes, and student opportunities. The major cost driver in this section of the budget are contractual salaries and benefits for instructional faculty and staff. A major increase beyond employee costs is BOCs cost for special education. A popular program was eliminated going forward, leading us to place our students in a different, more costly program arrangement. Two identifiable changes in the program section is the move of ELL expenses, English language learners, from teaching to programs for English language learners due to the change in the New York State Uniform Accounting Guidance. Also, the move of the school physician costs from the Health Services section in the program budget, as Ms. Phillips just outlined, to Research Planning and Evaluation Section in the administrative budget. As I said, Ms. Phillips just outlined that move. There are several expenditure areas in the program component that are offset in part or in full by aid from New York State textbooks, hardware, software, library materials, special education, BOCs, and transportation, all in a one-year lag. Overall, this portion of the budget is increasing by two point seven three percent. This component's increase is sixty-eight percent of the total proposed budget to budget increase. Typically, after presenting this portion of the budget, I highlight the multitude of opportunities that our Lancaster students have as a direct result from the support of the community, from the dedication and hard work of our wonderful faculty and staff and administration, essentially those represented in the program component of the budget. This year, as Dr. Vallee mentioned, has certainly been a challenge, but our goal has been to maximize learning and the student experience. Together, the entire Lancaster community, and to the best of our ability, we have done just that. We are so proud of the faculty, staff, administration, students, families, for their tremendous perseverance and hard work that they have displayed over the last year. Our teachers continue to challenge our students and our students, despite those challenges, continue to meet and exceed the expectations set forth by our teachers. As Dr. Vallee mentioned, our graduation rates are among the highest in Western New York. More students will earn a Regents diploma with advanced designation than ever before and our seniors were awarded nearly ten million dollars in scholarships. Despite the challenges, our youngest learners remain on pace with previous academic benchmarks. To go a little further into, from an academic standpoint, I'll outline a few of the highlights. Lancaster High School is once again named a 2021 Best High School by U.S. News &amp; World Report. Each year, about eighty-five to ninety percent of our graduating seniors plan to attend two- and four-year institutions, colleges, universities, and we continue to prepare our students for the college or career choice of their future. Nearly seventy-five percent of this graduating class will earn a Regents diploma with advanced designation that is roughly 10% higher than the previous high, by far the highest in schools' history. Lancaster students took eight hundred AP exams. Seventy-eight percent of all exams taken scored a three or higher. Our students don't just take the classes, our students earn the credit. Nearly half of all the graduates who, from last year, took one, took at least one AP exam and forty percent of those students earned college credit. In addition to the AP classes, our students take full advantage of the nearly twenty dual enrollment courses and counting that we offer for them to earn college credit. Our Foreign Language Department has been a leader in awarding the seal of bioliteracy for the last six years. This year, we have another twenty students earning that seal. Our Lancaster alternative academic program continues to provide opportunities for at-risk students from an academic and social-emotional standpoint to ensure preparedness for life after Lancaster. At the middle school level, advanced grade eight coursework in Living Environment in Algebra I continues to thrive, providing increased opportunities for students in the math and sciences. This year, two hundred and twenty-one students will earn Regents credit in Living Environment, while one hundred and fifty-two students will earn Regents credit in Algebra I. It was mentioned in the Meet the Candidates about our academy program at the high school. There are seven career-themed academies providing priceless experiences and opportunities. The Leadership Academy, Project Lead the Way, Hospitality and Tourism, the Academy of Visual and Performing Arts, the Trades Academy, Healthcare Academy, and the Academy of Finance, who for the eleventh consecutive year, earned the NAF Distinguished Academy Award. Our teachers continue to move forward with curriculum initiatives started before the pandemic, many of which had e-based components such as Amplify Science and ELA. Our teachers continue to provide professional development for colleagues and cooperative learning to meet the engagement needs of our students now more than ever in hybrid or virtual learning or socially-distanced learning. Our data coaches work collaboratively by grade level or department to continue to focus on student learning while prioritizing the curricular needs of our students. Our students in grades five through twelve have the opportunity to participate in Project Lead the Way, Launch Gateway, and the Pre-Engineering Preparation Program designed to offer stem-and-steam learning experiences. At William Street, students have the opportunity to participate in creative writing, in a creative writing program in fourth grade, and have the opportunity to participate in accelerated math program in sixth grade. A strong tradition in Lancaster has been to support the local and global community. Each year, the students of the district raise tens of thousands of dollars and provide countless hours of support to local causes and charities. This year has been no different and our students have done a fantastic job. These are certainly a few of the academic accomplishments of our students and I certainly could go on and on. The pandemic has not slowed down our students. And at all levels, our students, whether they're in-person, hybrid, asynchronous, or fully remote, they continue to learn. They learn through our creative and entertaining asynchronous instruction that our teachers have provided to complement the in-person synchronous learning. They've taken virtual field trips in Western New York and around the world. They've taken virtual field trips in Western New York and around the world. There's been class visits between students in Lancaster and from other parts of the world. Many of our teachers have had mystery guest readers to allow our community families to support our students. At the youngest levels, we've offered keyboarding instruction for all students in grades two, three, and four. This has been an initiative that was started years ago and has proven to be quite useful over the past year. Our remote students, as mentioned earlier, receive the same amount of instruction as students under the hybrid learning model to keep them on pace and maximize learning. To make this all possible, this past summer, we were able to begin a one-to-one Chromebook initiative for all students K through twelve. Our youngest students have a technology literacy that previous generations of students just do not have. It's quite amazing. Lastly, from the academic standpoint, the community and Board of Education support has allowed us to conduct a K-12 summer program for over a decade. Hundreds of students have benefited from earning high school credits and also enhancing the skills and knowledge at the K-8 level. Our infrastructure is already in place and has been in place to allow us to expand our offerings this summer and increase the number of students who we can service to best support them as we aim to fill any potential instructional gaps that may have occurred from this past year. In addition to the classroom, and in many ways equally as important, the Lancaster faculty, staff, coaches, and advisors support our students on the stage or virtual stage, playing field, rink, track, court, and they have continued to create experiences that will make memories that last a lifetime. Once again, the dedication of our faculty and staff to serve the community and our students is unparalleled. And our students, our wonderful students, take full advantage of these opportunities and excel to maximize the student experiences. All clubs, organizations, and athletic teams that could participate this year did participate this year. It may not have always looked the same, however, our students created memories that will once again last a lifetime. Lancaster students continue to have leadership opportunities K through twelve, such as Student Union, Swiss, and SSAC, and have their voice heard in their educational experience. The high school's Student Union achieved a Gold Council of Excellence Award for its sixteenth consecutive year and is one of nine that has earned that achievement since the inception of the award. Our William Street students participated in a virtual talent show to continue a wonderful tradition that started years ago. In terms of athletics, certainly has not always been easy, but the hard work has paid off, as we've had several sectional championships, some for the first time, for example, boys' ice hockey, field hockey, rifle. We're in the midst of, I think, fall season right now, and some are still competing in the playoffs. Football right now and volleyball, and hopefully many of our spring sports were in sectional championships. Our students have signed letters of intent to continue competing at the collegiate level. Numerous student athletes were Western New York Scholar-Athlete Award winners and honorable mention recipients, based on their excellence in the classroom as well as on the playing field. All varsity teams once again have earned the New York State Scholar-Athlete Team Award, which means the overall GPA for the team is over ninety percent. Music, once again, the Lancaster Central School District was named a 2021 Best Communities for Music Education for its excellence, innovation, and passion. Our music department is second to none. This is the fifth consecutive year that they've earned that award. By the way, if you haven't seen them, our drama programs put on groundbreaking, precedent-setting, and newsworthy virtual performances with Our Story Goes On at Lancaster High School and two performances at the middle school, Into the Woods, and Once on This Island. Our choral programs at the K-three schools have restarted once the guidance changed to further provide opportunities for our kids. Our ensembles, our choirs, orchestras, and bands at the William Street, the middle school and high school have created virtual performances that were nothing short of spectacular. A couple of examples include the Halloween Spooktacular, holiday concerts, and so many more. As a quick recap, despite the challenges of this past year, our students continue to excel in and out of the classroom. It's a testament to the entire Lancaster community, the faculty, staff, administration, our families, and our students, and we hope to continue to support them in our journey. I could go on and on, as I am so proud of Lancaster always, but especially over this past year. Thank you again to the community for helping to maximize learning and the student experience. I'll turn it over to Ms. Phillips to discuss the capital component of the proposed budget.
Thank you for that brief synopsis, Dr. Kufu. So, the third component of the budget, the capital component, provides for operating and maintaining the district's facilities, our debt service payments from capital improvements and transfers to other funds, including a one-hundred-thousand-dollar capital outlay project. It represents sixteen percent of our overall budget. This portion is increasing by two point eight eight percent over this current year's budget. Contractually obligated salaries and benefits, just as the increases in the other sections do, is a major player in the increase in this section. And then we also had to budget a hundred and sixty thousand dollars for a mandated building condition survey that we have to complete every five years, so 2021, '22 is our year to complete that. We do receive aid on that expense in the following year. Our debt from construction, that's out to be about sixty-one thousand dollars less than the previous year, and that's even while including the new expenses for BOCs construction that were approved by the component districts last year. Our debt on the revenue side is offset by building aid and our use of debt service reserves, and that's offset in full by those two revenue streams. The transfers to other funds include a hundred thousand dollars for a capital outlay project, which would be the replacement of some rooftop HVAC units at the high school with some of the locker rooms near the field house. The other transfers to special aid fund is for our summer special education services and programs, and for the lunch fund, it's for meal balances. So to recap, overall, the three components are right on target with this year in terms of percentages. Compared to last year, the administrative administration component is point two percent higher, the program component is point one-nine percent lower, and the capital component is point oh-two percent higher. So, really, the pieces of that budget pie, administration, program, and capital remain unchanged from previous budgets. Take a look at the expenditure budget in one other way. This is a grouping by expenses or like by object, what type of expense it is. Salaries and benefits, the first two codes, and then the benefits code from the bottom account for eighty-six point six million of our proposed budget. That's seventy-four percent of our overall budget. This is very, this is typical compared to past budgets. We're always at that seventy-four percent. Two point six million of the three point four million dollar budget-to-budget increase is attributed to salary and benefit increases. So seventy-five percent of the overall increase is attributed to seventy-four percent of our budget expenditures. That includes salaries and benefits for nine hundred full-time faculty and staff members plus hundreds of substitutes. On the contractual side, the four hundred type of budget expenses, we talked about having that building condition survey, which is about half of the increase. We also have some increases in our expenses for tuition to charter schools and also to Western New York bus for our transportation of special education pupils. On the BOCs side, we're experiencing those increases predominantly due to some remote learning mechanisms that we've had to put in place, along with our special education enrollments that Dr. Kufu mentioned. Our benefits are rising, health insurance predominantly, and also our required contribution to the both retirement systems. Those rates are set by the state, and they are set to increase this year. The, as a reminder, the vote on Tuesday is for the overall expenditure budget, so the one hundred and seven point nine million dollars that we just presented to you. You are not, the voters are not asked to vote on the revenues or on the tax levy or on the tax rate specifically, but we are required to present a revenue plan that shows estimates equal to the expenditure plan that we're presenting for approval. Last year, at this time, we had a lot of wild cards. We weren't sure what our revenue streams for the end of the year were, we weren't sure what our, how our revenue streams for this current school year would be impacted by COVID or for next year. So it was really an uncertain time. Our state aid was potentially going to be affected, our county sales tax revenues were potentially going to be affected, and even just our interest earnings from the changes in the economy. When COVID, so even when we were preparing last year's budget last spring and even up through as recently as this January, when the governor set forth his proposed budget, some of the revenue streams were looking pretty grim for us, and we were pretty nervous. There was flat foundation aid, negative funding adjustments to our state aid, adjustments to the STAR program and the STAR rebates that our homeowners received from New York State, and a use of the federal stimulus money, stimulus money that was allocated to go directly to schools to plug some of the state's budget gaps as opposed to directing it directly to the schools. The great news is I sit here before you saying that that turned around drastically. We did receive, once the state budget was approved at the end of, or the first week of April, an unprecedented state aid package, leading to a budget-to-budget increase of two point seven million dollars in state aid over our current year. Two point two million dollars of that was foundation aid, which was the largest increase we've received in foundation aid since its inception in two thousand and seven, two thousand and eight. We received increase in our BOCs aid, and we had some small adjustments to our transportation, building, and access cost aid. Most importantly, the pandemic adjustment, the negative on our state aid allocation for this year was eliminated for next year, and there was no use of federal stimulus money to plug any New York State budget gaps. So, separate from the general fund budget, we will be receiving federal stimulus money. We're just receiving information on applications and uses of that money. We do know that that money will be accounted for separately in the federal fund, so it will not be a part of, it is not a part of this budget. We will be required to spend a certain percentage of the money on addressing any learning loss or learning gaps with our students, and we also are encouraged to spend the money on one-time expenditures, so as to not start a program that should be a forever program, but then when the money is exhausted in a few years, having kind of that cliff or nowhere to, no way to pay for that program anymore. So, aside from state aid, our major cost driver on the revenue, or our major revenue source is our property tax levy and then our reserves. We are using our reserve funds to the maximum allowable per law, and the property tax levy we'll talk about in depth just a little in a minute. I think it's always helpful to look at where that revenue piece of the pie comes from. Property tax is forty-nine percent of our overall revenue, state aid is thirty-five and a half percent. Our appropriated fund balance and reserve use is seven point five percent. The proportions are within one percent of the previous year, but there's actually a good trend, and I hope that continues. Property tax percentage of the pie is down about a one percent, which means there's other revenues that are covering more of the budget. So with that CD increase, which we hope continues as a trend, the property tax portion of the budget will be able to continue to either remain flat or continue to reduce as a proportion. To talk about the property tax levy a little bit, our proposed levy under the cap this year was, the calculation was fifty-eight point four million dollars. That would have been a one-point-five-million-dollar increase over this year's levy, a two-point-five-eight percent. However, that is not the levy that we're proposing within this budget. The budget, the levy we're proposing is fifty-seven point eight million dollars, which is an eight-hundred-and-fifty-two-thousand-dollar increase of this current year, and that's one-point-five percent. So, we, the levy we're proposing is over one percent below what our calculation was with being under the cap, and that is about six-hundred-and-twenty-thousand dollars less than our cap figure. This is actually the lowest levy-to-levy increase that we've had since the inception of the tax levy in two thousand and twelve, two thousand and thirteen.
So, I think those people who know me best, you know, the Board of Education administrators in the audience know that I'm probably the second biggest worrier behind Mr. Mark Yoldin. And people are chuckling right now because they know it's true. He's number one, and I'm number two. You know, with regard to this budget, every single year, the, it's raining, and I worry because people won't come out because it's raining. And it's hot, and I worry people won't come out because it's hot. And no matter what it is, I worry, 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 and I was joking with Mr. Abraham today too. But I got to tell you that, you know, with all the dismal fiscal landscape pictures that we've been presented in the last year, you know, I'm really pleased and, you know, with a budget reflecting a one-point-three-five-percent tax increase, that seems reasonable to me. And so, looking at this chart, Lancaster's tax rate is fourteen dollars and thirty-four cents, which represents a nineteen cents per thousand increase. And it's important for me to say it here like I did last year as well, that, every year, that we're always conservative, that nineteen cents is probably going to be lower, but the reality is, is that we're always conservative because we don't set the actual tax rates. The town does that in August. So, that's the tax rate. The next slide shows the, what that would mean for each individual taxpayer. For in Lancaster, a hundred-thousand-dollar home would be a nineteen-dollar increase, a two-hundred-thousand-dollar home would be a thirty-eight-dollar increase, a three-hundred-thousand-dollar, et cetera. So, that's what we're looking at. A contingent budget, you know, if the district were required to operate under a contingent budget in two thousand and twenty-one or twenty-two, not only would non-contingent items need to be cut, but under the property tax cap legislation, the total tax levy cannot increase over the current year. So when we went on our presentations and I told the PTOs, when I presented to them, I said, "This is not the old contingent budget when you were in high school." You remember, may remember those days, the old days when there was, you know, the district would cut equipment and, you know, just sort of move on. We're in a tax cap world, therefore, under a contingency, we'd have to cut eight-hundred-and-fifty-two-thousand, four-hundred-and-forty-seven dollars from the levy. That's from the levy. So that cannot be done without reductions to program student opportunities and staffing. So, proposition number two, obviously, the budget is the proposition number one. Proposition number two this year are replacement buses, and we have five full-size, sixty-five-passenger school buses to replace vehicles that have exceeded their useful life. We have one forty-two-passenger wheelchair-accessible bus to meet transportation needs of students with disabilities. And we have a twelve-year planning process to replace those buses. So it's a little smaller this year than others, but this cost of the proposition is seven-hundred-and-thirty-two-thousand dollars, and this would be no additional tax impact because we paid for this for the, from the bus purchase reserve fund. So, in conclusion, you know, I'm proud of this budget. I know the board's proud of this budget. I hope the community's proud of this budget and come out and vote. Voting is Tuesday, May eighteenth, at Lancaster High School, from seven in the morning till nine at night. And there's two absolutely fantastic candidates, and if you didn't get a chance to see it, it'll be on our website again. You can review all their questions. They were built pretty good by Ben Fox. He's tough. But anyway, they did a good job, even with Ben. Where is Ben? He's tough. But anyway, Jill Simmy-Fetcher and Shannon Cohen have represented this Board of Education superbly and this community superbly for the last three years. I expect nothing better, nothing... I expect nothing better, nothing, you know, no change from, you know, the past three years. And I look forward to working with them now and in the future. Thank you very much. And at this time, if there's any questions or comments from any one here or outside, you will answer them.
Dr. Bailey, we did have, is this the same one you're bringing up, Sammy? Okay, I have it. From Robert Zidell at 26 Norris Ave. He had two questions. Surprisingly, I have the answers to them too. So his first question is, why have legal services jumped significantly, up 20%? So the legal services line, that was in the administrative component, does look like it has a significant increase. It's about $36,000. That is the code that the school physician is in now that I discussed. So the school physician went from the instructional component, nursing services, and moved to the administrative component, legal services, in order to run that service through BOCES and for us to receive aid. So it's just a relocation of existing expenditures in order to maximize our revenue. And Mr. Zidell's second question, and I believe he's referring to the newsletter with this one, is $117.9 million budget divided by our number of students is $21,724 per student. The mailer says $17,781. I believe that's in the infographics. So, so the per pupil spending is in a figure that's assigned by New York State each year. They did not update last year, so we're still riding with the 2019 figure. So first of all, it's usually on a one-year lag. This year it's on a two-year lag because they didn't give us updated figures. If you would visit the district's website, under the budget information, look under their required budget documents, and click on 2019 fiscal accountability file. That is where you will find that figure. And that is where it explains what that figure consists of. So it's not simply just taking our overall general fund budget and dividing it by the number of students we have, but it goes into depth about how they, like what budget figures are included in that figure. They calculate every school district across New York State in that same way. And for several years, I don't know where we stand this year because they haven't released rankings because they're not redoing things, but for several years, we were actually the number-one lowest cost per student in New York State. So compared to 432 upstate New York school districts. So if we aren't the absolute lowest spending per pupil within New York State, we're pro, we're, we've got to be within that bottom five without, you know, checking an actual list right now. Mrs. Janik, any other questions?
Thank you very much, everyone. Following this will be our Board of Education meeting. We will have a regular Board of Education meeting once, after following a short break. And it is 7:43, about 7:50. Thank you, everyone.
Tough crowd.
All right, I'd like to call this meeting of the Lancaster Central School District Board of Education meeting to order. We will rise for the pledge to the flag and remain standing for a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Tonight, we remain standing for Gregory Hawk, boys varsity golf coach since 2015. Personal anecdote here, yeah, every, every award ceremony for the sports, I would listen to Mr. Hawk speak. And, you know, he's one of the most profound speakers I've ever had the pleasure of seeing. And I look forward to that speech about his kids in that golf session every single year. So he will definitely be missed. Thank you. All right, moving on to 4.0 presentations. We have no other presentations. We had a wonderful budget presentation earlier. And then we had Meet the Candidates Night at 6 o'clock. If you missed either of those, they will be on the website shortly. 5.0 correspondence. We have no correspondence listed. Did anyone else receive any correspondence to Mark? Moving on to 6.0, approval of minutes. Do I have a motion to approve 6.1 regular session minutes from April 20th, 2021? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries. 7.0, items from staff organizations. Do we have anybody from the Lancaster Administrative and Supervisory Association?
Sure do. We are so grateful for our employees. They're grateful for your dedication and speaking of way of management.
Thank you, Mrs. Adnack. On to the Central, Lancaster Central Teachers Association.
Can you think, just a couple of things. First thing, I just wanted to, to thank you. Just to recognize our teachers coming off of Teacher Appreciation Week. And the LCTA, because we wish to recognize the dedication of the teachers of the LCTA. It's been a very challenging year for all the teachers. But our teachers have made it work. They've done above the eye. These words seem to probably make, so I want to take a moment and take our moments. The second thing, this committee met up with Mrs. Adnack. The LCTA is setting up to help get the budget passed. We have home mags running to speak. We also will be sending our family to the advice kind of speaking. We get enough comments for the budget. As well, AI is, this is special and it's, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Abraham. Anyone from the Lancaster Association of Service Personnel? Anyone from the Lancaster Association of Substitute Teachers? On to 8.0, board reports. Do any of the board members have anything to report? On to 9.0, superintendent's administrative report. Dr. Bailey?
I'm all set, Mr. Sage.
Thank you. All right, 10.0, any old business to discuss? 11.0, new business. 11.1 personnel items. Do I have a motion for 11.1.1 personnel changes? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries. On to 11.2, education items. Can I have a motion on 11.2.1, the Committee on Special Education? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries. 11.2.2, can I have a motion on the Committee on Special, Preschool Special Education? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries. On to 12.0, business and financial items. Can I have a motion on 12.1, the financial items? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries. 12.2, can I have a motion on the policy adoption 5634 Gender-Neutral Single Occupancy bathrooms? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries. 12.3 is a policy first reading, 7317 District Technology Device Student Agreement. That one is for information only. We'll read that a couple more times before we vote on that. 12.4, can I have a motion on the bid award for waste removal and recycling? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries. 12.5, can I have a motion on the bid award for waste oil tank removal? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries. 12.6, can I have a motion on the AIA contract with NW Contracting? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries. 12.6, can I have a motion on the AIA contract with NW Contracting? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries. Can I have a motion on 12.8, the NYDOT Transit Road Pleasantview Drive land acquisition? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries. 12.9, can I have a motion on the construction change orders? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries. 12.9, can I have a motion on the construction change orders? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries. Can I have a motion on 12.10, contract with Rachel Schneider? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries. Can I have a motion on 12.11, a contract with Rachel Schneider? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries. Can I have a motion on 12.13 for the food service operating reports, February 2021? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries. Can I have a motion on 12.14 for surplus equipment? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? 13.0 is a public hearing. We have no one. 13.0 is a public hearing. Uh, we have no one signed up for, uh, this evening. Uh, 14.0 is an executive session. Uh, before we vote on that, that, that effectively ends the meeting tonight. Uh, our next meeting, uh, will be May 18th, the annual budget vote, uh, and school board election from 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM. Again, that's in the Lancaster High School Java Gym. I hope to see everyone there. Uh, 14.0, can I have a motion to go into executive session? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? All right. Thank you, everyone, for coming.